I'd like to welcome everyone to our work session tonight and we got a lot of good information coming our way it looks like. And so, I do know that Mr. Clark had a work engagement and I think Larry did as well, had another engagement. I'm not sure exactly what it was.
He was going out of town.
Out of town for some. Anyway, we are recording the work session tonight as we normally do and so we'll turn it over to, at first, we'll turn it over to Dr. Putnam and then you can introduce who's next on our agenda if you'd like. Ms. Moody, I think.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm going to turn it over, first of all, to Leanna Moody and Charlie Emmon for an ESSR update. As you know, those funds are set to expire September 30th of this year, so this will probably be the final update. Fingers crossed.
That's the plan. Good evening Chairman Francis and members of the board. In front of you, you should have a one-page spreadsheet that has green at the top says PSU 440 Haywood County Schools. So, this is, this is the update of where we are currently. This is ESSR 3, which is the only thing that we still have out there. Looking at this, you can see that we have 33.59% remaining. And our biggest amount remaining is going to be in 181 and we do have plans for that. We're doing, we have a big summer school planned with salaries and supplies. And then also, we're going to pay August and September salaries because it goes until September 30th. And they just did a new amendment to ESSR 3 funds and is, are going to allow prepayment of subscriptions and software for two years, so through June 2026. So, we're going to take advantage of that opportunity also.
Very good.
And the one that still says 100%, the 188, remember that's still our summer program with heights, that career exploration program that it won't start until this summer, so.
Okay. So, you're projected to get real close to spending most of it?
Yes, sir. That's the plan.
That's the plan.
We're going to look at zero percent down there at the bottom, hopefully.
That's the goal.
That's the goal.
The target. Very good. Anybody have any questions for Charlie?
I'll just add a comment of commendation for Ms. Emmon and Ms. Moody and Prior, Taylor Garland, for, and Ms. Barker for putting those, and Mr. Hanes, I knew I'd leave somebody out, I probably still did, for putting those funds to good use. I go to superintendent's council, I hear about other superintendents who, their funds, it'd be near to impossible to spend all of their funds. Or they've been, they've used those funds for things that will expire in the way of personnel and you can't, you can't get it back. And so, our team has done just a great job of making sure there's staying power for, for how they've used these funds. So, I just wanted to brag on them for that work.
Very good. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Very much.
All right, and Ms. Emmon's up again for Honors Courses Implementation Plan.
Okay, I just wanted to give an update on the state's new honors implementation guidelines. A little history, in the past, they required honors portfolios from every teacher that taught an honors course, which was a lot of work to review and to give meaningful feedback. So, DPI decided that they'd push that to the districts because they couldn't handle that. And of course, there was a lot for the district to do to make it meaningful and making sure that the honors courses are taught with fidelity. So, they, since there's such a high percentage of students taking honors courses, I think it says like 80 something percent. It actually says 84% of all high school graduates in 2022 successfully completed at least one honors course. They decided they needed to look at it and make sure that they had some guidelines in place that were able to be followed within the district. So, at the foundational level, big ideas about what the honors courses are versus the regular courses. If you'll look on page two, there's a little chart of what it is and what it is not. What it is is an independent investigation, intentional differentiation, inquiry and connections, depth and complexity, collaboration, increased pace. What it's not is more work, additional assessments. It's not a one-size-fits-all, it's not something longer. And so, the emphasis is being made on making sure these courses are following this developmental and evaluation tool, which can be found on page five. Sorry, flipping through a lot. Since honors courses receive a .5 added GPA weight, they do want to make sure that they have these things, acceleration, differentiation, enrichment, and an extension of the North Carolina Standard Course of Study. So, what they are recommending is that as a district, we have any teacher that is teaching a course that is not inherently honors, which would be something like pre-calculus or the CTE drafting or welding, those that have the standard course of study that is, that is made as a honors course. So, any course other than those would need to, the teacher would need to show how they are doing this to make the curriculum and the course above and beyond the regular standard course of study. So, we are currently asking our teachers to fill this out, any high school teacher who is given an honors course, where they get the extra .5 weight, to fill this out. And then, when they turn them into us, as a school, they're going to turn them into us and then we're going to meet at CNI and go through them and either approve or send them back for a couple of revisions. So, that's, that's the plan. Once we feel good about that, and it has to be, has to be completed by the, in the next school year, we will send in page seven, which is the PSU attestation statement, saying that we are following these guidelines.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Emmon?
So, what were the classes, Ms. Emmon, then you said did not have to, drafting? You said they didn't have to meet the criteria?
That, the ones that are, they call them inherently honors. So, when they build the standard course of study, they write the, they write the curriculum as, or the, the standards as honors standards versus a regular standard.
So, like some of those, yeah, like some of those classes, they're already, they come from the state like that. So, they already have the 4.5 credit, you teach it, you get a 4.5. Okay, so the ones that aren't like that, then let's say health, is it Health Science 1?
Health Science 1.
Like Health Science 1 is not, but they can make that honors by doing these things that are on this. And that would encourage a lot of our kids to take that because it's more, you know, it's a higher GPA, it's a higher weight class.
Health Science 1 now is not honors, but you could make it honors to get the added GPA.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Very good.
Any other questions for Ms. Emmon?
Now, does it benefit the teacher to make a class honors?
Yes, in a way that if students are not, are not taking the course because it's a four-point class and they're wanting that extra GPA of a 4.5, they can make their course enhanced and make it an honors course.
If you ask about the teachers, I'll tell you what I see, we have a lot of our students, and we're talking about CTE right now, okay? So, we can talk about other academic courses. But a lot of our students that are college-bound, that are in those competitive tracks for universities, they, they won't take the CTEs because there, a lot of them are four-point classes where they'd love to take the CTE. You know, a lot of people going into pre-med and, and things like that, they, they would love to take the health sciences, but they may not feel like their GPA, you know, that could lower their GPA. So, I think it opens the doors for more of our students. As far as the teachers go, you know, I think they would want to mix. They teach regular classes, they can teach some honors classes, they're not going to have all honors, so. But when you hear the, when, Charlie and I were shocked when we heard across the state, what was that percentage again?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four.
Yeah, 84% of our kids are taking honors classes, so. And you look at the community college, so many of our kids go there where they get a five-point class and that's a college class, so. Yeah, I think they'll always have a mix, Mr. Kirkpatrick, of, of both.
I think it's going to be very beneficial for our kids and for the teachers. I mean, I think it's a win-win.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think it sounds like something you could encourage some of your CTE classes to maybe try to get that and then, like you said, somebody that's wanting to do that, then, yeah, I mean, I could see the benefit. I mean, you could turn the whole school into if you really wanted to. I mean, really, if you look at it, you could, I mean, if you could get it, every one of the classes would be at that, so.
That's why the state's giving us that sheet and that criteria. Be a good principle, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Yeah, just make every bit of it.
All the honors classes.
Any other questions or comments? Very interesting, thank you for that information.
Thank you.
All right, next is Ms. Morris.
All right, Ms. Barker and Ms. Shipman.
Yeah, I'm so glad that Ms. Emmon gave the ESSR report. So, we do have some remaining ESSR dollars and we have the opportunity to purchase an instructional resource for our English Language Arts curriculum. And these materials would be also used to meet a requirement for Senate Bill 387 that requires us to align with the science of reading. We've got great materials right now, okay? We, the way that our balanced literacy program obviously has been very successful. But there are a few missing pieces that the state is going to require us to have by implementation. So, these materials would meet that, it's not materials that we're going to use lockstep. We love what we're already doing, but we feel like this could provide some really valuable resources, especially in the areas of grammar and vocabulary for our teachers. And so, we're especially excited about that. We had, you know, a great literacy framework, but we also have heard from our beginning teachers, it's really hard pulling materials and resources, so hopefully, the end game would, this is going to help our students, but also help our teachers. And so, Ms. Shipman has been testing this out with a lot of teachers. Ms. Morris actually got to go in a classroom and see it and so, that, we sent you an email, had some of the teachers on there. Please call and talk to them, we'd be glad to go over that with you. Again, Dr. Putnam puts it best, we have a tool belt, like, we never need to do one thing, okay? We see districts do that, it's not good, we've never done that in Haywood County. Okay, so we have foundations, we have HEAGARDY, we have, you know, we have bookrooms, we have GOs, we have all these different resources. This would again, just be another resource that, that teachers can pick and choose from as they felt. But we do have the money to buy that right now with some remaining ESSR funds. We'd like to ask your approval for that and it does meet the state requirement. So, and Ms. Shipman can answer any questions too that you need.
What are the costs associated with this?
So, the quote, and I can get Ms. Emmon to tell you exactly, is, it's 300?
It's 395,000, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it's 395 and that's because we teach literacy in every elementary classroom. So, it's not just, so that's, every teacher would be equipped to have that resource. We also can, we, we are not required by the state to, to purchase this for middle school, but we'd also like to get a few kits for our middle school teachers to look through too while we have these existing funds. So, it's quite a bit of money, that's why we wanted to come, but again, something that we're going to have, we need, a gap that we need to be filled, a void there. And we have asked the State Department to come and talk to me, we took them to Riverbend Elementary, we showed them what they did and, you know, they still encouraged us to get, you know, additional resources. So, that's what we're going to do.
Now, is this going to be a?
If you approve it.
Is this going to be a one-time thing that's going to last for how long for the 300 and, what'd you say?
395.
395, or is it going to be a cost every five years, every 10 years? Or every year when they change something in the program?
Great question, Mr. Henson asked that when he came by the other day. Ms. Shipman gathered that information. You know, the teacher's guides, these are, you know, there's different units. And Ms. Marsh, can you show them, like, one of them, like, this is a unit in fourth grade on, what is it on?
This was American Revolution.
American Revolution.
This was the teacher guide and this was the student, that much.
The student books, we wouldn't have to purchase every year and the teacher guides we would. Now, Ms. Shipman, you don't tell them the consumables is what we call them?
Yeah, so, um, so with this one-time purchase, we would be getting classroom sets of books that would be good for years and years and years. Student books, a set of trade books, and then the, the teacher kit comes with it as well, so all the teacher resources. But as far as what we would have to replenish, and we're going to have to get into it and see what we like and see what the teachers like and what they don't before we know exactly. But there is a cost to replenish the student workbooks because it comes with an activity book for every student. And so, those are consumable. And then, if we like the digital license, there is a digital piece for the teacher so that the teacher can display videos, pictures, the text, all kinds of different things, vocabulary for the lesson. So, that's the digital piece for the teacher and then there's a digital piece for the student as well. So, the digital piece would be a renewal every year. And also, if we like the student consumable activity books, that would be a purchase for every year as well.
So, now, and I'm sorry I couldn't make the, while you was presenting it during the day.
That's okay.
So, can I see those?
Yes, absolutely.
So, this will be in all the elementary schools?
This was just a sample of.
And this will be on?
I picked something that was like social studies because this was fourth grade social studies because that's.
Well, and social studies probably ain't going to change, just like history's not going to change, except once you pass one year, then it's going to change.
You add two.
Then you'll have to add two. So, you're saying teacher, student, correct?
Right.
You're saying teacher will?
So, the teacher books will come in the teacher kit and that'll be a one-time purchase.
One-time purchase.
Until we add new teachers and then we'll have to get them a kit too, but.
And then this?
For every unit, there's like a student book that goes with that unit that looks like that. Something along those lines.
So.
The other thing to take into consideration is, we're going to have some veteran teachers that will not realize heavily on the teacher book or further along. And we've got some younger teachers that are going to be like, please, need that. So, there's going to be some disparity there as well. So, as far as a hard number of, how many of those teacher books are we going to have to replace? It's dependent on the skill of the teacher, depending on their use in the classroom.
Do we know like what one kit costs?
So, um, let's see, I have, I have all of that information. So, it depends on the grade level.
Right.
Um, they're all priced differently K-5, but a kit can run as low as $1,275 or a kit can be $1,999, so that's the range.
And once again, I'm going to apologize for not getting, when Emmons was doing it at the schools, how technology is, why are we still having things like this? Now, obviously, I do understand you've got kindergarten, first, second, third, whatever, but when you start talking about fifth and sixth grades, why, or fourth and fifth, why would we even have a hard back book when every one of them has a Chromebook? Does the company offer digital?
They do, they do. The students will be able to look at the text either with a book that they have in their hands or the teacher can present the text digitally, so they'll have the choice.
So, is, are they a?
Cost difference, yeah.
Yeah, are there a price difference if we don't get the book and we just do the digital?
It'd be less.
Or is that one price, we get both of them?
So, with, let's see, let me make sure I tell you this right.
Because I mean, when you start throwing books, and I'm not being, I'm old-fashioned. I mean, I, I look at electronics, but in today's world, I don't see why we have books.
So, what?
Really.
That's, that's a great question. It's a great question. So, what the CKLA is doing right now is they are offering a digital license and that would be $15 per K-2 student and it's $25 per 3-5 student. And with the digital license, they're throwing in the book.
Okay. Yeah, they're throwing in the book if you're buying a digital license, so, yeah.
So.
That makes a little better sense. Yeah, they're throwing the book at you either way.
It's like ordering a Happy Meal, you don't have to take the drink, but it's not going to get any cheaper.
They don't give you that toy.
And if you, but if you order separately, it's going to go way up.
Yeah, right.
True.
Yeah, and that's.
A la carte, I think.
That's the reason why I was asking, is, I mean, and that's what Mr. Rogers said, are there a price difference with digital and the book? But if you're buying a digital, they're throwing in the book, so. I mean, yeah, I mean, when I say we shouldn't have books, I mean, I think books is great. I mean, everybody should still be reading out of books.
Still should be encouraging kids, yes.
Yeah, yeah, you should still be encouraging kids doing books, but I was just.
Yes, but.
I like a piece of paper myself.
Right.
I'm old-fashioned.
I'm old-fashioned about that.
Yeah.
I like a good book in my hands.
Right, oh, yeah.
Any other questions? Great questions, everyone.
One more question.
Yeah.
So, do we have an idea what it might run after the first initial cost?
Okay, I think I do, I think I do. Okay, so, for all K-5 students to have a digital license for one year, so that would be 2,510 students and that would run 58,470. And then with the digital license, they're going to throw in activity books. And then you've already got the one-time purchase of all the trade books with the first purchase.
Pretty reasonable in the big scheme of things, in my opinion.
This time next year, we'll be needing to come up with 58,000, is that what you said?
For K-5.
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah.
For K-5.
There's, there's already money that's set aside for textbooks that you, I mean, a lot of times we have to move that money around. So, there's already a pot of money that we've got for textbooks.
Yes.
But we ain't going to be depending on ESSR after this. I guess what I'm trying to get at it is, are, do we have the money that a year from now, we're not sitting here saying, well, let's take it out of this, take it out of this, ESSR funds are gone, or we don't be able to keep this up?
Yes, the simple answer is yes. And again, kudos to all of the folks managing that ESSR money. Were it not for that, the, the initial purchase would have been really, really tough. Renew it and keep it going? We have ample funds to supply that in subsequent years. So, they've again chosen a really good resource that will allow us to continue this down the road at a, at a price we can afford.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you. I mean, it's.
Great question.
It's greatly, yeah, I mean, it sounds great and I, I fully support it, so when you bring it Monday, I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the teachers, they had me ask you the other day, the teachers that have been conducting it at each school, how long? How long have they been doing that? Is it been a few months, a few weeks?
I think for the most of them, we did kind of a phase one and a phase two. I took two different groups with me out of county to observe these materials being used in a different district. And so, the first little pilot group, they started in January and then the next group was just a few weeks behind them.
And what kind of feedback have you gotten from those teachers?
The feedback has really been great. You know, these are some of our very best teachers, veteran teachers, and I've got a BT piloting as well. She's an outstanding BT, but the feedback has been great. The feedback has included comments like, this is really going to help me include my grammar, my writing component, my vocabulary, it gives me the text I use. You know, it gives me activities that I can do with my EL students. It gives me the writing activities to where students can write about their learning. My kids are learning morphology, they're learning sentence structure and they're saying it makes me a better teacher. And I've heard just really, really great feedback of some of these pieces that I think we've been missing in our literacy program that we can do better. We're doing a great job, but I think that when we give teachers a resource to utilize and they're not having to spend the whole weekend, you know, trying to piece together, let me find my text, let me figure out, okay, what standards am I going to teach? What strategies am I going to use? Now, what's my vocabulary that I'm going to focus on? Now, what's my writing activity going to be? Well, now, how am I going to teach my grammar? How will I teach my sentence structure? And I think giving our teachers a resource that already has all of that within it, I think we're just helping to equip their tool belts better.
I did love, when I went to watch the lesson at John McHale, I did love the vocabulary piece to it. She was second grade, she failed.
Um, she was first grade.
First grade.
First grade.
And the vocabulary was, was at the very beginning. She was using some digital, she used the digital component. She said, which she normally wouldn't have done, but she enjoyed and it read, she didn't, she said it read the story to the kids, which normally she would have done. So, she said, I wouldn't always use that, them reading to the kids, but the vocabulary had hand motions too for the kids. And I'm a visual, I don't know about y'all, but I'm a visual learner.
I am too.
And every vocabulary word had, you know, like, Brooke had like, for, you know, strings or something like that. It had like a hand motion like that. If the kids were cute, they would catch on immediately and like do the hand motion when they heard the vocabulary word. And some of them were, I mean, they were pretty, pretty big words for, for first graders, but they seemed to catch up. So, from what I saw, that was very useful for the teacher and kind of also a way to, it kept my interest, the lesson did, the whole time, and the kids were very attentive. You know, even the kids that are, you know, a little bit more squirmy, they even seemed to be attentive to the whole lesson. So, that was my experience of going to, to observe.
One question that you mentioned, on your pool of teachers, you said you had a lot of tenured teachers and new beginning teachers and just you got a good mix of young and older, you know?
I think most, most of the teachers are veteran teachers within that pool, most of them are. But I made sure to include a couple of the younger ones as well. I know there's one right now that's piloting, she's a BT2, so, and she's, I, I would never want to put anything extra on a BT2 unless they're just, you know, they're just getting it and, and not going to be overwhelmed with it. But she was excited to try it out and she was like, oh, my goodness, this is going to be helpful. This is really going to be helpful for new teachers coming in. And I think it could be a good, perhaps a good teacher retainment piece, you know, too, just to retain our teachers to know that Haywood County Schools provides great resources. We equip the teachers well to be able to do their jobs.
That's what I was hoping to hear, so, thank you.
Ms. Shipman, for the, the counties or the districts in North Carolina out of 115, what were their reasonings for going to something different than the CKLA? Do you know that?
I'm, I'm really, I mean, I'm not exactly sure.
Are most around us doing CKLA?
So, it, it looks like it's about split.
Okay.
Like, half and half.
Okay.
Is what it looks like it's about, a, a pretty, pretty even split. There's a couple of other districts that are. There's a couple of other districts that are doing a couple of other different things too, besides CKLA.
Gotcha.
But the two that we have seen the most are CKLA and Witten Wisdom are the ones that primarily are being chosen.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And that was in an email, Mr. Nesbit? I don't, did you see the breakdown of that? Yeah. Um, yeah, so I just wanna make sure y'all had seen that too.
Any other questions, comments?
So are we, we gonna have to vote on it Monday? Is that what we're planning this for May?
Yeah, we were gonna bring it for your approval.
Yeah. Alright. Very good. Everybody good? Alright.
Alright, I believe I am up next with some facility updates. Um, so Chairman Francis, members of the board, this evening, just wanted to run through a couple of projects we've got going on. Um, first of all, at Bethel with those two grant projects that we've got going. Um, so the leftover grant money from the turf project, we decided to do in Building and Grounds concession stand and bathroom and to redo those, um, at Bethel, at the turf, the football field area there. Um, so demo and cleanup has been completed on the old concession stand. They're gone. It's, it's pretty wild how quick it happened. Um, but as they were digging the footers just yesterday, um, they ran into some dirt that it, it really isn't conducive to putting a pad and footers on. So Rise had to touch base with their engineer and they're talking to them. And I don't have any more updates on that right now. Hopefully there'll be an easy fix for it. We'll be able to do and continue to move forward on schedule with that. Um, but by Building and Grounds on Monday, I'll have more information, but that, that's kinda where we're sitting with that one. Um, the baseball softball concession stand and restroom at Bethel, um, that one, that building is completed. Our maintenance guys with Haywood County Schools, they'll be going in, um, and installing the electrical and the fixtures next week. So within another week or two, that one should be completed and then Rise will come back in and they'll paint it. And it should be good to go. So that one's, that one's looking really nice. I swung by there the other day too. Um, and then as far as Bethel goes as well, not grant projects, but the roof replacement, um, for the main building and the wood shop, uh, the company's supposed to begin, uh, that replacement after testing. They had asked to start on May seventeenth. They got delayed a little bit because of rain and whatnot, but Bethel Middle starts testing on May seventeenth. So they can't start then. So they, we've, we've pushed them back to right when they're done with testing. And as soon as we give them the green light, they'll be ready to go. So that's where we're sitting on that one. Um, Tuscula's farm, uh, the bathroom shells, Mr. Solis' class did a wonderful job on that. That is completed. There's no fixtures in the bathroom yet. Um, we're gonna hold off putting those in until the sewer lines put in, just to, uh, you know, avoid any mistakes.
Somebody will use them.
Accidents. Or not accidents, you know. Um, but, so we're gonna hold off on that, but, uh, now that that's done, um, also the electric is done in there. Our maintenance guys are done with that. So we've just gotta get it inspected. They can flip the switch and they should be good to go. And then the classes will be able to come in and start using that space and start putting in their stalls and whatnot for the animals. Um, they are also exploring some fencing options for the property and they're gonna touch base with, um, Mr. Connor. Make sure he's good with what they decide and then they'll kick it to me and I'll bring it to Building and Grounds so we can discuss kinda their, you know, what's the next step fencing wise for them. Um, next, we've got our tracks. Uh, Pisgus Track is completed. It looks amazing. If you've had the opportunity to walk by and, and walk on it, it feels like walking on a cloud compared to what was there. It really is great. Geo Surfaces did a great job. Um, I know they had a track meet recently and the kids loved it. It, it was very good. Um, and then Tuscula's, the plan is to begin it on May eighteenth. Uh, so we're rolling along with those. Um, FEMA, all the projects for FEMA have been completed. We're currently, uh, working on processing the last payment. Yes. Um, once that's completed, we'll be able to file with FEMA and insurance for the remaining and get reimbursements from them. And hopefully be done. Um, so that, that's looking great. And then also Waynesville Middle's gym, their HVAC, uh, it is completed and we're working on the last payment with that too.
I just hate he got to bring that home because, phew, that was a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of work.
I appreciate, I appreciate that. Um, and I've got one more thing. If there's not any questions on facilities, uh, just athletics, I wanted to touch on real quick too.
One thing on your facilities.
Yes.
Have they reviewed Pisgus Track again and maybe seen about some more security fencing or?
Um, we have not, I mean, so I know originally the recommendation from Principal Connor was the rocks that are currently there. And we ran that through Building and Grounds and Building and Grounds was okay with it. You know, if, if there is a, a feeling that fence might be needed or necessary, it's something we can discuss, um, through Building and Grounds. I think that's fine. I did, um, just kinda preemptively have the, the gentleman that got the bid for the Waynesville Middle fence come and just measure out a fence around it and kinda give us a ballpark. I don't have the actual quote, but I do have an estimate, just that he gave us on spot of what it would be to put a fence up if we decided to. Um, a four-foot steel fence, very similar to any other kinda fence that we're doing, identical to the one at Waynesville Middle, except it's a six-foot. Um, would be forty to fifty thousand for that. Um, you know, so I think that's something we could discuss. You know, again, in, in talking with Principal Connor, he felt that the rocks were sufficient, you know, personally, where, where they're placed. I, we pointed out a couple of spots when Zach Chof and I were up there, that we could probably add some rocks to help. You know, some little holes we saw, but other than that, I do feel like it would keep anybody out that wanted to purposefully, you know, drive on the track. But as always, you know, if, if you all feel as though something's needed or we need to go a different route, we can always discuss it and go from there.
Okay. I do have a question about the Pisgus Track and I unfortunately have not been over there to, to look at it, so I didn't get to make it to the track meet Wednesday. Um, I know there was an issue with one side of the track being a little higher. They had to build it up. And there was like sort of a ledge there. Have they addressed that or is that, how did that work out with the, the meet?
Um-
Where they had to, they had to raise the track and I think there's like a little drop off on one of the curves or something like that.
There is, there's one side that's where the buses are that, that is up a little higher. Um, I didn't hear of any issues when they were doing it, um, as far as construction goes. They are gonna come and, and seed kinda that, that bank in that side to hold in the aggregate that was there. Um, that was kinda the last thing that they had to come back and they were actually there the morning of the, the meet to put some seed on it and some straw. And we asked them to hold off so that we could run the meat and straw wasn't blown all over, you know, the track when they were using it and they'd come back later. So, um, I think it was actually this past Monday, they were supposed to come back and, and finish that up.
So they are addressing it then?
Yes.
Okay.
I have some pictures if you'd like to see. This is the, the side where the, the highest, there's rocks there. It's about that much of a drop off, but it's actually on the other side near the, um-
Mr. Haines, how far of a distance is that, that?
On that side.
It's lower. Um, Ms. Morris may be talking about another side, the one side. See, the thing is, there's a, there's a foot around the outside of the track. Right. It's outside of the lanes. Right. Um, which should be enough buffer to where no one would step off. Got you. Um-
But that's, um-
I would like to see that fence done personally. Um, I just think we'd be selling ourselves short putting a three-quarter million dollar-
That's kinda, there, there is a drop off on the other side.
New surface thirty years after it was due and relying on some boulders. When we're talking, you know, what'd you say, fifty thousand, forty thousand? Forty to fifty, yes. So I would encourage us to look at that. Um, I, I mean, kids doing a doughnut in a vehicle for ten seconds could ruin a, a track service pretty quickly. Sure, yeah. I think it's something we can discuss in Building and Grounds. Absolutely. Sure.
And I think we'll probably need to discuss the ledge, just to, just for any safety concerns on whether that steps off and whether it needs to have some field dirt or whatever. So we'll look at that though in Building and Grounds and bring it back. Any recommendation? Very good. Any other questions about facilities or you had one other topic about athletics, somebody?
Yes, so, um, if you'll remember, a couple of work sessions ago, Dr. Putnam discussed with you, um, the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, they'd sent us a survey and there were three options, uh, that, or tentative options that they'd go with as far as reclassification goes, when that happens in twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, you know, we, we filled out our part, our portion of the survey and we voted on the big thirty-two, which was most beneficial to us. Um, the reclassification is gonna be ADM based only. And so, you know, just looking at that, that gave us the most wiggle room to keep Tuscula and Pisgus together. Um, that one is the one we found out on Tuesday at their Board of Directors meeting that they chose, which is great. Um, so, um, don't know exactly how that'll all work out yet and where that'll fall. But, um, they will use first month's ADM numbers from next school year, twenty-four, twenty-five, to then create the new alignment and it'll be eight classifications instead of four like it currently is. Um, so we're looking at about fifty-seven, fifty-eight schools in each conference, except for the, the highest AA, which will just be thirty-two. So, um, just wanted to give you that news and let you know that was, that was good. So hopefully it all works out. But the one we, the one that was most beneficial to us is the one they chose.
Very good. I'd hate to have to see him pat back down there and get on-
Start him up.
Very good. Very good.
Absolutely.
Next, I think Dr. Putnam has a presentation about the academy.
Alright. Um, I know we've discussed in finance, um, uh, budget expansion priorities. Uh, one is to continue to explore solutions for non-certified classified personnel. If you remember, uh, there was a, a fifteen-dollar flat rate, uh, minimum increase for all of our non-classified, our non-certified classified employees. Um, and we are still seeking solutions to that, um, to rectify that because it creates inequity uh, or injustice, I, I guess you would say, for those folks who have been with us, uh, for many years. It's not really an incentive. That minimum moved, um, employees who are coming in, you know, first year, really close to those that've been, uh, with us ten, fifteen years. So, um, we have not found a resolution for that, but it remains, uh, one of our top priorities. The second that I talked about was, um, uh, bridges and the academy. If you'll remember, those are alternative, uh, services for kids. Um, kids who need a little extra support and a smaller teacher to student ratio. And, um, we have, uh, with some creative budgeting, been able to locate dollars within our current expense, uh, our current, current expense, not fund balance or any of that, uh, to fund the academy for next year. Um, the academy, if you remember, is the one that served our middle school students. Um, we currently have a service called Bridges, uh, uh, not Bridges, stepping stones. Uh, and that's kind of a step down from regular school, uh, where, uh, we, we serve kids in that way. And our highest numbers come from middle school age kids into stepping stones. Um, and so the need is there, um, greatly for middle school age students who need an alternative placement, uh, for whatever the reason. Uh, tough things going on at home, uh, mental health support, uh, social anxiety, you name it. Um, and so, um, again, through, uh, by analyzing the budget and figuring out, uh, funds, uh, we, we would like to upstart the academy, uh, this coming year.
I like that.
So starting in August?
Starting in August.
Now, do we need to do, is that something that the board's gonna have to approve to start back up or can you just do it?
Yeah, I, um, so, you know, it's, it's within administrative tasks. I just wanted to make you aware of it. You know, it went away. It was a part of a budget cut. Four years ago?
Probably dropped.
Three or four years ago, maybe. Um, and-
Mostly due to mental health.
Yeah, it, it has been sorely missed. I, I can just tell you. Um, and so, you know, w- we look at that i- in a lot of ways. Objective number one being that we have a suitable space for every kid. No matter what they got going on in their life, we've got a good place for them to go and learn. Uh, but number two, I, I, I think that it is hard for kids with high needs in a larger classroom on a teacher, because the teacher has, you know, twenty-five, twenty-six others and then this really high-needs kid. And it's hard. No, nobody really wins in that situation. The twenty-five others that are in there, the one that just needs a little something different, and the teacher who's trying to hold, pull it all together. Um, and so, um, we look at this, uh, through the lens of, of retention as well for middle school educators.
I like it. I like it.
So here is gonna be the five hundred dollar question.
Okay.
So what is the budget for this and where are you going to house them? Cause I've missed the last couple of meetings because of baseball. So you may have went over th- some of this, but?
No, um, so I, I, I haven't been able to find a way with money that till tonight or the last couple of weeks. Uh, we feel like we can probably use some Title IV money, which has a healthy and well-student, um, money. Um, we feel like there's probably some flexibility with state funding in the way of positions, um, how we allocate those. Uh, and in talking with Brandy Stevenson, who manages the Exceptional Children's Program, she feels like there's money she could devote to the program. So it's already within pots of money that we have. It'll be pulling them all together. Uh, total budget on that is, um, let me do my math real quick again. I won't tell you wrong. Uh, it's gonna be about three hundred and ten thousand dollars and that's all personnel. Um, location, uh, I met with the three middle school principals this past week just to discuss options, um, should y'all be in agreement with starting the academy back. Um, and th- they feel like the best location, a- and I agree, uh, is at Waynesville Middle. Because you have a space there, um, that is separate, physically separate, uh, both for bus drop-off, bus pickup, and in physical classroom space. Um, whereas we looked at, uh, Canton Middle, there would be a crossing of academy kids with regular population. Bethel, um, had a good separate physical space and was, and was an option. Um, Bethel typically doesn't require, um, any slots or put, uh, students to go to the academy. So it kinda didn't make sense there. Um, and so we landed, that's how we landed on Waynesville Middle.
The same location that it was previously at Waynesville Middle School, above the little gym?
I would imagine so, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Yep.
Same, same layout, two teachers?
Two teachers, three teacher assistants. And, and getting the right personnel, uh, is critically important. Um, it, you know, you have to have the right disposition. You have to understand, um, and be skilled in working with challenged youth. And so, uh, Ms. Stevenson's gonna work with the principals to help lay out and pick, um, the- And so, uh, Ms. Stevenson's gonna work with the principals to help lay out and pick, um, the staff for that program. Um, Stevenson and I, and I have been through this process many, many times. From bridges at Central Elementary to the academy at Waynesville Middle. She and I have worked hand in hand before on upstarts of these types of programs.
You think any of the teachers that previously taught in the academy would?
If they're listening, we would like to have them back, yes. I don't know if they'll apply, but have them back.
Ta- it, it takes teachers with a certain gift.
Make sure your microphone's on.
Yes, it is. Teachers with a certain gift.
Good, I couldn't hear, I'm sorry.
And connection with those kids. So two teachers, three TAs, and then you have to have a social worker?
Um, we did not have a social worker. The, oh, about the only thing, and the principals brought this up to me and I'm still mulling this over. There might be the need for additional administrative support, just because, you know, it's.
Discipline.
Th- there's a good, good bit of discipline at times, so I'm mulling that over. The good news is we're not having to go into fund balance or reach outside our current budget.
And that is recurring expense.
It is a recurring expense.
I'm glad we, I know there'd be a lot of folks happy about that.
I think there's a great need for it. I know we've discussed it in finance extensively, but it will, I do think it will take some pressure off of our middle school teachers and help retain those teachers.
Very good. Any other questions, comments about the academy?
Uh, well, without, without objection, again, it doesn't require a vote, but without objection, I'm gonna proceed with those plans. I'm gonna tell Ms. Stevenson to advertise and start posting for those positions and working with the principals. So.
Very good.
Very good.
Yay.
Yeah, we're pretty excited.
That's it for the, uh, work session part. And we just need a motion now to go into closed session.
I'll make the motion to go in closed session.
Mr. Francis made the motion. Say with Mr. Nesbit, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries in. We'll be in closed session here after a brief recess. We will not reconvene.